Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 14th, 2022. And I would ask that everybody please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Miller, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Invocation first.
What?
Invocation first.
No, I do the... We do... I thought we'd do Pledge of Allegiance first.
I'll do the invocation.
Yeah, go ahead.
My Pledge of Allegiance is that the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and as part of our invocation tonight, I just would like to offer that we are indeed honored tonight to have a large crowd of people here. Many of them are successful visitors to Batavia for the past few months, attending Batavia High School, and they're from other parts of the world. And it enriches our community to have people from throughout the world come into Batavia and make that someplace that you better understand, and hopefully we've taught you how to understand us, and that we are here hopefully to do the right thing for the right reasons in the face of the world. So I think as we go forward in the days ahead and generations that are going to take over, there's going to be a real need that we all understand and work together and work very favorably with each other. So I just thank you for setting this standard that hopefully others after you will continue forward. As I say that, I also want to say a word of appreciation to the members of the City Council who annually and weekly and monthly always do all they can to do what they feel is in the best interest of our community and vote and support the various items before us. And as a community, we are very, very fortunate to have 14 individuals who are willing to put their names on a ballot and then report for at least two regular City Council meetings each month, and then the committee meetings on following Tuesdays, in which they fully understand what the city government's doing and how it works. And I think it is working because the city does, I think, a very nice job of doing it. So I want to thank you all for this. I invite you to sit down, and we will continue on with the meeting. So at this time, I'd ask for the roll call.
Miller.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vogelsinger. Second call Connolly. Second call Malley. Second call Vogelsinger. Uh, let's see, that's 11 of 14, Your Honor.
So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. All right, moving then to item number four, which is the reminder as the moderator of the meeting that I encourage everyone, if you're going to come and speak, that you use the microphone and that you speak clearly into it, because this meeting is being recorded on television and will be played to the rest of the community on BATV in the days ahead. So I'd ask you all to please use the microphone. If you don't, it becomes very hard for anybody to hear. So moving then to item number five, or items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. And so tonight, I am going to change three items on the agenda, because we have some people that I'm told have other things they need to do. And so we're going to start with item number 12, which is going to be swearing-in a probationary police officer, Aaron Riley, and that will be filed by item, what now is items 10, which is the Kane Vax Appreciation Award. Corinne Pierog, the Kane County Board Chairman, is here with us to present that. And then after that, we're going to have item nine, which is a proclamation and moments of appreciation for the Foreign Exchange Student Program, AFS, at Batavia High School. So those would be the first three things that we did. So at this time, I would like to ask Alderman, or Alderman, Officer Aaron Riley, if he would come forward. And Chief, would you give a brief introduction to us about him?
Do you need to vote on the agenda change?
We have to vote on the agenda change, and then we're going to have to do the consent agenda, too, because we didn't change that.
Right. Okay, just give us a minute. We need a motion for approval of the changes on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Kirk, call the roll.
Uh, Rosado, I'm sorry, Saron.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Chanset. Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Second call Chanset.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. 11 yes, no, no, three absent.
11 yes, no, no, three absent. Motion's approved. So then the other one you want us to do is the consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay, entertain a motion then for the approval of the consent agenda?
You need to read the consent.
Well, I know we're... Give me a motion, and we'll read it.
Okay, so moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf.
Second.
Second by Alderman Barron. Can I have a reading of the items on the consent agenda? Alderman Chanset, are you available to read?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had an audio issue. Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept, I'm sorry, approvals, the October 14th, 2022 payroll, an amount of $939,614.57, accounts payable check register, an amount of $1,886,231.44, city council minutes for October 3rd, 2022. Approval, cow executive session minutes for June 22nd, I'm sorry, June 28th, 2022. Approval, cow executive session minutes for August 23rd, 2022. Resolution 22-103-R, approving a preliminary plan of subdivision of Batavia Logistics Center. Resolution 22-104-R, approval of a consulting agreement with Water PIO LLC for PFAS communications planning.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
11 yes, no, no, three absent.
Very good. All right, now I would like to ask Chief Ozzie to come up and bring with him Alderman Riley, Officer Riley.
I'd like to introduce you to Aaron Riley, our newest police officer. Aaron Riley is a certified law enforcement officer who joined our department on October 10th after 15 years of law enforcement service with the Sugar Grove Police Department. He is a graduate of Marion Central Catholic High School and has also attained a Bachelor of Science degree from Bradley University in 2002. Additionally, Officer Riley served eight years with the 178th Infantry Regiment of the Illinois Army National Guard, where he held the rank of Sergeant. While at Sugar Grove Police Department, Officer Riley was a field training officer and a member of the Kane County Chiefs of Police Honor Guard. Officer Riley is currently assigned to the Field Training Division. We are excited to have Aaron join our police department. We believe his law enforcement, employment background, and life experience will help make him an immediate impact on our department's patrol staff.
And we look forward to a number of years of great relationships with you in the days ahead. So that being said, I would like to ask that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Aaron Riley.
I, Aaron Riley.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On October 10th, 2022.
On October 10th, 2022.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And do solemnly swear or affirm.
And do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations. So moving to item 10 on our agenda, we are very honored tonight to have in the audience Corinne Pierog, the Kane County Board Chairman, who has brought with her the Kane Vax Appreciation Award. And Chairman, would you use the podium up here and...
I handled this quite gingerly. Hi, I'm Corinne Pierog. I'm a resident of Batavia for the last three and a half years, a city that I have grown to dearly love. And it's been... I'd like to send my apologies for not coming to visit you all sooner. It's been busy. And part of the busyness is trying, when I got elected, to fight the COVID pandemic that was just pounding Kane County. And little backstory, as we were looking for a vax site that would be appropriate for all of our citizens here in Kane, we came across the empty Sam's Club. Now, I knew about the club because, the facility, because I live here in Batavia, and knowing it was empty. So we came through, took a look at it, talked to the rental agent, and sought permission to use it. It seemed like a very ideal location. Matter of fact, it became so ideal that I can proudly say that outside of Cook County, we've served more people than any other county in the state of Illinois. We also became the training platform for both Cook, for Cook County, and all of Illinois on how to efficiently distribute the vaccine. We have recently closed down because that was a happy thing, that the pandemic has finally gone away enough that we can control it through other sources, so we no longer need the vax site. And with that was a feeling of mixed emotions of something we had achieved, but a happy closure to something that we never want to have come back to our county. We vaccinated about 114,000 people in that vax site during the time we were open, from every continent in the world except Australia. So congratulations on a job well done. And I'd like to call special attention not to, not only to our mayor, but also to Dave Brown, who is the Commissioner in District 10, who did a great job helping me out as an emissary, because he would deliver messages and gain support. I would also like to thank, very early on, your Chief of Police and your Fire Chief, because it was difficult. It was a difficult, stressful situation at the beginning, if you can remember, where people were insecure, they didn't know about the vaccine, they were afraid of it, they were afraid that they couldn't get it. So, but all of it went calmly, went well, and highly, highly efficient. So again, thank you for all of your support. And this, I'm holding it because this is very dear to me, because this is, this was an amazing achievement that together we all accomplished. So I don't think anybody else has gotten this award before, but it's the Heart of Public Health Award, to honor to the city of Batavia for the Kane County Vax Sub 2021 to 2022. And I had one of our staff members actually made the cradle that it sits on. So it is with great pleasure and honor that I present this to all of you.
I just wanted to thank Chairman and also express my appreciation for the great leadership she provides Kane County in a wide variety of challenges and subjects, and they're changing every day, and she's got new things firing at her from all points of the county. And so she's in a very rough and tough job, but you seem to be up for the challenge, so...
Oh, thank you.
So thank you.
With everybody's help.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So thanks for coming down tonight, and thank you for this.
Thank you.
We'll find a nice place in our newly remodeled City Hall when we get it done to show.
And I'll be, I may, I'm going to be back probably early next year to talk about workforce housing. So we'll do a little presentation for you, something that is badly neat throughout the county, and just present the findings that we have discovered and how together, by the vax site, we can come together to be of help to workforce housing to solve that issue. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then I'm going to move to item nine, which is a proclamation from the city on the foreign exchange students, AFS. And we have Robin Lang in the audience. If you would come up and maybe bring the four students that are here with you. And why don't I have you come in here where I had the police officer and his family stand, because that way we get you on TV, and the camera's right there, so... And we have a proclamation about your work in Batavia and your visit here that says, "Whereas a great majority of exchange students who come to the United States to attend high school enjoy positive, life-changing experiences, grow in independence and maturity, and improve their English language skills, and build relationships with U.S. citizens. And whereas the city of Batavia has a multi-generational history of welcoming people from all regions of our world due in large part to the opening in 1966 of the Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory, which has brought thousands of scientists and engineers from around the world to visit, take up residence, or attend educational opportunities offered within our community. And whereas students who participate in an exchange program share the knowledge and goodwill derived from this exchange experience with fellow citizens upon their return to their home countries. And whereas education is one of the greatest investments of individual, an individual can make in their future and is enhanced through cultural exchange. Now therefore, the city of Batavia sincerely hereby welcomes, recognizes, and offers its gratitude to the students studying in Batavia High School under the Foreign Exchange Program, and for the commitment of excellence and cultural enrichment." Now, we have at the audience Robin Lang, and she's going to introduce each one of these gals, and I've got copies of the certificate to give to each one of them, so...
Okay.
You'll have to point out to me who, which one I should be giving to.
Who they are. All right, that sounds good. First of all, I would like to really thank the city of Batavia and the high school for recognizing this year's students and for all the things we've done, you've done in the past for these students. This is a anniversary year for AFS. It's their 75th anniversary of hosting and sending exchange students, and it's actually the 62nd year that Batavia has had students. In the last 62 years, we've hosted, since the beginning in 1960 of our first student, Bjorn, from Norway, we've had 117 AFS exchange students from 49 countries, and we've sent 37 Batavia students to 25 different countries. So this is a program, like the mayor said, that is really promoting world and global competency and peace and understanding, and these students that we've hosted, all those 117 students, is only a drop in the bucket compared to all the AFS students that have been hosted all over the whole world. Since 19, I think since 1968, Batavia has only missed finding families to host students for two years, and we even hosted a student during the COVID year of 2021. We had one of only 43 students in the whole country that year. So I think we're really to be congratulated and thank the citizens of Batavia and the families who stepped forward to host them. And we have, we have three AFS students this year and one student from an organization called CET USA. So we don't just, there aren't just AFS, there's other programs also. And I gave you each a brochure, a little bit about AFS, so look into it. Promote it with people you know, because we're always looking for Americans who'd like to go abroad, and families who would like to host. So the first student there is Edith Serrano Sanchez from Spain, and she's with CET USA.
That's her certificate, but I have brought for you a copy of the Batavia History Book. I had the honor of offering the number of years ago. It tells you all about everything that happened in Batavia since about 1833, it was started, and I think it's nice to take back to your...
There'll probably be a quiz on that at the next meeting, right? And the next student is a student from Paraguay, Luciana Valazquez. Did I say it right? Name's wrong.
Can you say it for us? Can you say your last name for us?
The last, Valazquez.
Luciana, is that...
Louisi... Luciana. Luciana. And then we have Riti Gupta from India. And last but not least is Kwam Di Kuchasam from Thailand. Thank you very much. We are very honored to be here and receive these certificates and books.
I'm really very proud of this program, because I graduated Batavia, I used to go a long time ago, in 1960. I started this program about years before I got there. And it was the year that I was younger, a student came from Germany. It was much farther after World War II. Really did a marvelous job of educating the Batavia students how badly these people in this country know about what had happened in World War II. Really, I thought, made a very positive, brought it together, so admire of the jobs that they see. They've done a marvelous job of...
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to take a picture somehow?
Yeah, we want... Yeah, it's been, it's been a really wonderful experience to have students here in Batavia. Yeah, go ahead and take the picture. I don't need to be in it. All right.
Okay, I guess we have a couple of things that are going to fly through on the agenda now that we return to this original format. Next will be item seven matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wants to speak tonight? I didn't think we did. Okay, then item eight is a public hearing which was scheduled for 7:35, and as you know, we just couldn't have it any sooner, but we can have it later. So this is a Special Service Area 69 for the Winding Creek Subdivision. Do we need to convene a public hearing or anything for this?
We need to open a public hearing.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make it when we close it. You just open it.
All right. Convene a public hearing for the Special Service Area 69 for the Winding Creek Subdivision. Anybody have anything to say? This is out on McKee Street and Mill Street, kind of in the area behind Wocat Lane where the coal store is on the frontage of Randall Road, and there will be 163 single-family home units built there, of which two of them, I believe, have already been started construction on. And it'll either be a one-story house or a two-story house, all with full basements and two-car garages. And that's the program, so the building department tells me it's going on. I'm being told by some of the realtors in the area that there's already significant interest in this, and they think that there's going to be quite a few of these sold maybe before the first of the year, so we'll see what the reaction is. Anybody want to make any comments publicly about it? Want to make a motion to adjourn the hearing?
I will make a motion then if there's no comment, that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, moved by Alderman Miller, or excuse me, Wolf, second by Alderman Barron, for the closing of the public hearing. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
11 yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved. All right, exit that one. And now, because we've kind of moved things around on the agenda, the next thing up is item 11, and that's our honor to have our school superintendent, Lisa Hitchens, here, who's going to speak for a few minutes about the school district's referendum in the coming general election.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. I'm also going to have Tony Englezi join me. He's the chief financial officer for the district, and I won't take up too much of your time, but I am appreciative of all the time that you give for the community to come and present matters in front of you, and so I'm going to take advantage, just a couple minutes, not too many. I think you've heard me over the years talk about our facilities many times, because you've given me that opportunity, and I appreciate it. We like coming here because we have an audience that watches our board meetings, but it might not, it might not completely overlap with the segment of the community that watches your meetings, which is why we like to come here as well. But we've communicated about our referendum many, about 100 different ways, but just, we want to leave no stone unturned. We want to make sure that everyone knows that we have put a question on the ballot. The board voted in July to put a question on the ballot, and we wanted to make sure that people understood what the question meant. And over the course of three-plus years, we've been engaging many stakeholders, and the conclusion was, over this last year specifically, we did a lot of community engagement, that what we heard from the community and what you're going to see on all of our informational things that come in the mail or that we've posted in the city, was that we believe that we can, that we've heard from the public that we want quality schools, but we also don't want, you don't want us to change the bond and interest tax levy. So through engaging stakeholders over those three years, they've helped us prioritize because we have identified many more projects than what would keep us to, and that we can do while still living within our means. And what the community told us is that every school needs some work, and that there is a window that we can take advantage of right now, and through our community engagement, they said that you should take advantage of that window. And what that window is, is our bond and interest levy that every year on your tax bill, you'll see that one light item. We pay approximately $9 million in bond and interest, that's how much we levy every year to the taxpayers, about $9 million. And in about two and a half years, you would see that those bonds be all paid off. And so in one scenario, if we did nothing, the taxpayers wouldn't have anything to pay the district for the bond and interest tax levy, but in order to keep, to maintain our schools and keep the quality, if we do issue some debt, we can tackle some of our projects, and then we can do that by keeping that... debt, we can tackle some of our projects, and then we can do that by keeping that bond and interest tax levy the same dollar amount. So what that looks like is there's a lot of different levers, maybe think about it as dials we can turn, so to make sure that our payment stays at that $9 million every year. And, but there are so many variables that when we do this presentation with groups, we go into great detail about all the different variables, the bond market, the cost of construction, the timing, how quickly we want to do these projects, and also the scope. All of these things can change over time, just so we can keep that $9 million bond and interest levy. So we do know that there's a couple things in each building that we're committed to, and I'm going to actually turn it over to Tony, who's going to explain what the question looks like on the ballot.
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, the question on the ballot is important. We still come across people who, in town, despite the many ways that we've attempted to communicate this, don't know about the referendum, or they don't know what the question is asking. And the question is, as all questions are on ballots, is well-prescribed in Illinois law. And so we can't just choose any old question that we want to ask that might be more informative. So we're doing our best to get around town and make sure that people understand the text of this question. And I'm, I'm going to read it to the council here this evening, in hopes that others will have the opportunity to hear about it and know what it means. So, shall the Board of Education of Batavia Community Unit School District Number 101, Kane County, Illinois, be authorized to build and equip a new HC Storm school and a new Louise White school, and demolish the existing buildings, and alter, repair, equip, and improve its other school facilities, including but not limited to installing student safety and security enhancements, and improving roofs, floors, windows, HVAC, electrical, and plumbing systems, and improve the sites thereof, and issue its bonds to the amount of $140 million for the purpose of paying the costs thereof? Well, it's a rather long-winded question, and we want to make sure that people know what that question means before they, before they vote. You'll notice in there, it doesn't say anything about the tax levy not increasing. Talks about $140 million in bonds, which is a lot of money. And it also talks about HC Storm and Louise White in particular, but it doesn't talk about the other schools. So we want to make sure that people understand that the tax levy won't increase. We would issue up to $140 million in bonds, depending on what the bond market and the construction market is at the time that we issue those bonds, but we wouldn't increase it more than what we're paying now. And despite the fact that we mention those two elementary schools, every school in the district will receive considerable amount of work. In particular, the middle school and the high school each would receive about $20 million worth of work. There's certainly more than $20 million worth of work to do in both of those buildings. HC Storm and Louise White are going to be replaced. We've had trouble with those buildings literally since the day they were built. They're fine schools, they look great from the street, from the curb, and they're nice places, all the same, but they need a heck of a lot of work. They haven't been touched much since they were built in 1978. And there's a lot about them that needs to change, and they weren't constructed in a fashion that makes it worthwhile to renovate. Actually, it's far more expensive to renovate them than it is to replace them. And we're at that point, frankly, with Alice Gustafson School and J.B. Nelson School, they were built in 1955 and 1957, but unfortunately, we just don't have the money in, in living within our means. We can't afford to replace those schools at this time. And in all likelihood, we would be back to the community in maybe 15 years or so with a referendum to replace those schools. But all the same, we're going to put money into those schools to get them through the next 10 or 15 years, and improve security and safety in each of them, and do all the other things that we need to do for each of our schools, but also live within our means at the same time. And I think that's about it from the, from the question standpoint, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that the council might have.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Have Wolf. I've been asked several, several times why those two schools were chosen and not the two older ones.
It's a very logical question. You'd think that the older schools would need more work, and they certainly do need a lot of work. Those two schools in particular weren't constructed well. There was an issue with the way that they were built. As a matter of fact, the school board sued its architects that built them, and did settle a suit that, well, actually won an award for the way that they were constructed. But in addition to that, other aspects of the school that weren't problematic when they were built is, it was built with steel walls that hang from the ceiling that were intended to be flexible, modular. You could actually move the walls around. And of course, those walls haven't moved since the building, the buildings were built in 1978. But they sway, they literally hang from, from the rafters. And so it creates a whole host of issues for us, not the least of which is the electrical. We can't put any more electrical on the walls, and our electrical needs have changed quite dramatically, as you can imagine, with the technology and the like in the last 40 years. And now with modern fire code, with door closures and security issues for classrooms, we have auto door closers on those walls. The walls sway and bind, and the doors, in many cases, don't shut, lock. And so that's just one of dozens and dozens of issues that we have with those schools. And so, yeah, they're not the oldest schools in the district, but they need the most work. And frankly, it's just, it's, I know people don't believe it, we tell them over and over again, it's literally cheaper to rebuild them than it is to renovate.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No, I would just offer up that as a partner in this community in trying to do the right thing and the good thing and the futuristic thing, certainly during my tenure as mayor, the Batavia School District School Board has seemingly always tried to figure out what it is they needed to do, and tried to do the best thing that they could do for whatever it was that they wanted to do. And there, I get to know a number of mayors in the area who have all kinds of problems with the school district, likes which I've never had. And so, you know, I guess I have some degree of faith and appreciation that the Batavia School District and its board are here to, in front of the community, trying to do the right thing for the right reason at the right time, and that, you know, that there'll be future generations of Batavia kids who will move into that new school, and after, was it 15, 16 years in the school district, they will have had the opportunity in some instances to be, you know, have experienced all the good stuff that's being taught here, so, and put into place. So I commend your efforts to try to put this together in a way that makes it somewhat affordable for Batavians to have. And you're not, as I understand it, the tax rate's kind of, kind of stay where it is? Is that what's, this is where, what we're talking about, right? I mean, I think that's a real key point, that you're not looking to raise the taxes significantly or do anything like that. So I, I appreciate the foresight that went into this. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing up is 13, and that's a report from Batavia Main Street, and Beth is here.
Hi, thanks so much for having me today. First thing I wanted to comment on is Wendy Reed, who is, works for BEI. She has resigned from the Main Street Board due to new commitments, so we will be looking into replacing that position. And I want to introduce Kristin Desler. She is our new assistant director, and she's going to introduce her.
Sure. Hello, my name is Kristin Desler, and I started as the assistant director at Main Street in August, so I'm still here, which is exciting. Things are going well so far. I come to, I've come to the organization with 20 years of experience from the Oswego Land Park District, and so I am familiar with the world of events and nonprofits and working with the community, which is something that I really love. I'm a Batavia resident, and I've lived here for nine years with my husband and our two children. And I'm just really looking forward to helping to improve the programs that we have and support the local business. And I'm appreciative to be here with all of you tonight, and I believe I'll be speaking with you next month, so this is my trial run, and my heart's beating pretty fast, so I'll practice that deep breathing before then, but thank you very much.
I do it every month.
Kristin was a volunteer at Main Street for the last three years, you forgot to mention that. So for our artists and collective, she's just been a great asset for us, and I look forward to working with her for many years. So just regular updates for Main Street. This weekend is the last weekend for the farmer's market on River Street for the year. It is moving to, for the final farmer, outdoor farmer's market, it will be out here for in front of Peg Bond for Bat Fest, and the time changes as well. Instead of being 8 to noon, it is 10 to 12, 10 to 2 on that day, and that's because of Bat Fest. For Bat Fest, we have, that's on October 29th, we have 61 businesses participating in the downtown trick-or-treating, and then there'll be about 30 vendors set up at Peg Bond, as well as the farmer's market vendors, so it should be a good time. And if anybody's looking to be a crossing guard or anything, let me know, we need some. The indoor market is moving to the dock at 151st Street. We're very appreciative to BEI. That will open on November 5th, and our out, indoor market is, hours are 9 to noon. We will be skipping November 12th because of the Winterfest Art Market, which we do in partnership with Water Street Studios. So Winterfest Art Market will be at Water Street Studios in the dock and at 160 First Street. So we have about a little over 60 vendors this year participating. It's a three-day market, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so, you know, start shopping early. And then we're continuing to work on our Shop Small Saturday videos. We've had 35 filmed, we're scheduling the remaining five, and we're still on target to have those start releasing in November. And that's about all I have for today. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question. Just to clarify, this weekend it's normal, this Saturday is normal.
Normal farmer's market.
And then there's still one more from 10 to 2.
Yes, 10 to 2 on, it'll be on Houston Street and in the U shape by Peg Bond. We move because the United Way has their 5K, and that's where they launch their race.
Got you. Thank you.
So I have a question. I walked into McDonald's this afternoon, and when you're the mayor, when nobody else can figure out who to talk to, they come and talk to me. So here comes the, no less than the manager of McDonald's, and she says to me, can you have somebody from whomever come and talk to me about when this thing is going to be in the morning where we give away the candy for Halloween?
Yeah.
Is, we want to participate in it, but I'm not sure what day I'm supposed to do it. So could you have somebody come and talk to me and tell me what day it is, and we'll be ready for it?
Yeah. Well, we'll reach out to them again, okay?
Okay. You've already talked to them once?
Well, we send out emails, but...
Yeah, that probably goes to a corporate office.
Yeah.
And this is a local staff.
Yeah.
And the gal that's over there, I get the impression she wants to be part of Batavia and look like she is.
We'll stop by tomorrow.
She was just wanting to know, could somebody please come and tell her what day to have the candy ready?
Yep, will do. Anybody else?
Yeah, so if you do that for me, I'd appreciate it.
It's done, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right, now for some quick business items. Item 14 is kind of a pickup of the public hearing we just had, ordinance 2244, establishing a special service area number 69 for the Winding Creek subdivision. Who's got this one?
I've got one, Your Honor. So this is for the subdivision that the mayor talked about earlier, the Winding Creek annexation. And this is part of the annexation agreement for that subdivision. This would be a dormant SSA at this point. It's set up to be a backup so that there would be any costs that would be associated with any of the common areas out there if the homeowners association does not take care of them. This SSA would be put into action, and that would provide the mechanism to collect money to do the, any work that would need to be done out there.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Not, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2244, establishing a special service area number 69 for the Winding Creek subdivision.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfa for the approval of ordinance 2244. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Sarone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 15, which is ordinance 2245, demolition for 107 Union Avenue. This is an old building that's been there for a number of years, and I guess we're about to take it down.
Yeah, BEI has come in to gain approval for demolition of the building that's at 107 Union Avenue. Basically, it's a building directly east of the end of Main Street, where Main Street ends at Water Street. They believe that that was constructed around the 1940s, really hasn't been used since Pomarco moved out of there, and for, temporary for more access and for parking, they want to remove that building, basically replicate what's now the south wall of it on the, what was an opening into the original building that was there. And I think the, the thing for me is, you know, we just heard from Beth that they're going to be using that for a couple of events, and the winter market again over there, this will provide, I think, a better parking situation for that street when the winter market's over there on Saturdays, because it does get quite busy. So there's not any questions? I will make the motion that we approve ordinance 2245, demolition certificate of appropriateness for 107 Union Avenue.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sarone for the approval of ordinance 2245 for the demolition of 107 Union Avenue. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Sarone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Ordinance 2245 is approved. Okay, moving to 16, which is ordinance 2246, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia and Kane and DuPage Counties to issue sewer, sewage revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million in evidence of loans issued pursuant to the Water Pollution Control Loan Program. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, I do.
Dan's got it. Alderman, Chantet?
Indeed. As we discussed in committee, we are going to be applying for the stoneness for the continuation of work at the water treatment plant that's for Phase 2A. We do need to have the paperwork in place. It was prepared by our bond counsel, Chad, and Cutler, and as we heard from Peggy in committee, while we do need some money, it looks like there's going to be additional funds that are going to be requested, but this is the beginning portion of it. And I guess if Peggy is here, could certainly go in on more into the numbers for us if anyone is interested. Otherwise, I would move that we approve ordinance 22-46, so we can keep this project moving forward.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Baron for the approval of ordinance 2246 for the sewage revenue bonds. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfa.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Sarone.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Eleven yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item 17, which is Resolution 22-105-R, authorizing execution of notice of intent to award to Brant, Branch, excavating a Morris, Illinois for the lead service line replacement project in the amount of $3,426,389. Who's got this one?
I've got this, Your Honor.
Alderman?
Yes, this is a extra procedural step in just giving a notice of intent. This does not obligate us at all, but we are excited that we will get a, almost three and a half million, well, 3.9, up to $3.9 million loan, a forgivable loan from the Illinois and a half million, well, 3.9, up to $3.9 million loan, a forgivable loan from the Illinois EPA for lead service line replacement projects. So this is, this resolution is just a process we need to go through to say we are applying, we have a notice of intent to award it to Brant, and it'll not be coming through general funds. Anybody have any questions?
I'll just make the observation, this seems to be one state program that says, seems to have its act together. And it would appear that it's going to save the Batavia ratepayers some significant amount of money to get rid of all this lead-based pipe that we've got in the ground, some of it originally put in there about 1893. So it needs to be taken out, it's probably cracked and leaking. And I think Utility has a good idea where it needs to be taken out and how quickly it should be done. And I think this will be a nice enhancement. It's one of those that's buried in the ground, so most people will never see it. Maybe their water will run cleaner or straighter or whatever, but it's something that from a health and safety perspective needs to be done. So I appreciate the state of Illinois putting this out and finally doing something that doesn't have a lot of shenanigans associated with it.
Yeah. And I can't imagine anyone not supporting this. So with that, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 22-105-R, authorizing execution of the notice of intent to award to Brant Excavating of Morris, Illinois for the lead service line replacement project in the amount of $3,426,389.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sharon, second by Almen Sulfah for the approval of Resolution 22-105-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Saron.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Levin, yes, no, no, three absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item 18, which is the Administrator's Report. And in the absence of our city administrator who's off for a few days, Anthony, her most able assistant, is here to carry on.
Good evening, Council. So as Mayor stated, I'm here on behalf of Laura Newman, our city administrator. What she wanted me to do tonight was just give a brief highlight of the strategic plan for 2021 through 23. So I'm going to begin with that and then immediately following that, I'll provide the Administrator's Report. I would imagine there might be questions that come from this presentation. There may be questions that we might have to wait to answer, but we may also be able to answer some of the questions that might come up tonight. So I try and make this as brief as possible, but again, this is just to provide a brief update to our plan. Just give you an opportunity to take a look at these highlights here, and we're going to go through each of those individually. So, I mean, you know, these are just basic highlights, once again, that we've completed a portion of the hiring of the Business Development Manager. And then we have all the other sections here. So this is not new, this is just information that you've seen before, and I'm just briefly highlighting for you all. Basically, with the hiring of our Business Development Manager and creating an economic development strategic plan, this has been placed on hold due to a leave of absence of our Economic Development Manager. But we will be back on track soon as we create an economic development strategic plan that expresses the city's policies and expectations for the future development and redevelopment. Talking about our actively market Batavia to new businesses, basically the update here is we collaborated with the Chamber of Commerce in Batavia Main Street to create a small business video program to promote our downtown as a vibrant space to locate and grow small businesses. And again, these videos, as we mentioned in previous meetings, these videos will be used for the campaign to shop local this fall and winter. So nice PR and business opportunities for our businesses in Batavia. Promoting opportunities for downtown redevelopment and work to cultivate and facilitate projects such as, this doesn't happen anymore, so that needs to be updated for sure. So working with the developer that responded to the RFP to determine project feasibility, Houser Levine, gathering community and stakeholders input for the downtown plan. So many of you probably already seen the website and that information that's pretty much interactive for the public and anybody that wants to use that. Continuing to implement aspects of our streetscape plan. So our update here is we have a landscape design that is going to take a look at the archway to install a newspaper boy alley, which had been part of our original One Earth plans. So this proposal will be brought to City Council sometime in November of this year. It's just a brief update of our economic vitality objectives here from 2021. Again, here's 2022. Right now, we still have not had an opportunity to do anything for quarter four, but you can take a look at quarter number three. Moving on to the transportation objectives. So these are just a few of our objectives here from 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3. Again, this has been seen before. So an update on continuing to pursue implementation of a road diet on Illinois Route 31. IDAT has given approval for the city to move forward with Phase 1 engineering. The city applied for an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant to fund this project. Next, we have the adding X miles of charos or bike lanes per year. And an update coming from this ongoing bike and pedestrian planning efforts to help identify areas where charos or bike lanes could be installed. The plan will likely be presented to you all by the end of this year or possibly early 2023. At this time, no progress has been made on installation of charos or bike lanes this quarter due to waiting for a planning study to be completed. Pretty much the same update I shared just briefly in 2.2 reflects for 2.3 as well. Again, here is the 2022 quarter three objectives that we've worked on. Next, we have the infrastructure objectives. 3.2, review service level expectations that has been completed. So here for the development and infrastructure funding policy, at this time, there have been no updates. I stated this earlier in the previous section, as far as the update is very similar. This is 2021. Again, this is 2022 captures. Next, we have our river objectives. And again, we've seen this, move forward. So creating a master plan for the development of our riverfront. Just a quarterly update, third quarter update, the park district will review the HDG Amendment Report in October or November. A joint meeting with the city council will be scheduled for December or January. Actively marketing the riverfront development opportunities. Quarterly update, working with a developer that responded to the RFP to determine project Identifying inexpensive ways to capitalize on having a river in the heart of our downtown. Update on this is the city has applied for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grant to fund moving the bike path from the west side to the east side of the wastewater treatment plant. Lastly, we have our diversity objective. This is again very new to the city, but an update here, Wendy Bednerick, our HR director and myself, we've been actively attending the DEI Pilot Project Program and bringing some great information to our internal workplace DEI committee. This is composed of a representation of each of our departments here at the city of Batavia, from Public Works to Police, Fire, Administration. All of our departments are represented in this group here, but from a larger perspective, we are working with many other municipalities that are also coordinating and working on projects that have an emphasis on DEI, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion. This committee is currently engaging in a three-part learning exercise that came from this pilot program. So we're continually cultivating this aspect of our strategic plan because not only is it important, you know, from a respect, human respect, but it is also important as we try and make more people aware of what the city of Batavia is doing and making us a little bit more inclusive, representative of, you know, who we are, but who we like to be in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. And so as people start looking into the window of what is Batavia, am I a fit for Batavia? Well, this is an opportunity for them to see we're moving in a direction that is creating that welcoming, appealing work environment. So if they do decide to work for us or even live in our community, they know that they are represented, they know that they are cared for, and that respect is there. So I'm very proud to see this piece in our strategic action plan. And again, we're going to continue to follow through with this diversity objective and make sure that, you know, we are not just rushing through the process, but taking gradual steps to make sure we're hitting all the points, being representative of our organization, our community, and most importantly, making sure that this is second nature for us. So we do see value in engaging in our diversity aspect of the strategic plan. Does anybody have any immediate questions? Be happy to try and address those along with our staff here.
Any questions of Anthony?
I just, one thing that I noticed, I think it was that, is it the transportation, the third one, or the infrastructure? I know that it mentioned under one of the objectives was doing the slowdown, but it didn't even mention that that was one of the accomplishments, the slowdown program. It didn't mention as one of the accomplishments. So I just, maybe just add that as one of the accomplishments that was done for the year, because I think that was something that was very successful.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Alderman Barron. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. Now I'm just going to take an opportunity here to just provide some brief administrative reports here. As you all may know, we are undergoing some construction here at the city of Batavia and some good construction at that, but also some very disturbing construction. And our staff is working very hard to still work hard, but also ignore the sounds that they hear throughout the day. So with that being said, due to construction at City Hall, the community and economic development department offices will be closed on Tuesday, October 18th, due to the significant noise that will occur from construction activities. Just so that everybody knows, permit bins will be placed at the office entry and any inspection scheduled would occur as planned. Zoning staff will be working remotely that day and permit inquiries should be directed to our email address. And that email address is permits@cityofbatavia.net. That's P-E-R-M-I-T-S@cityofbatavia.net. We anticipate being reopened the next day, Wednesday, October 19th. More from community and economic development, the property at 916 Park Street has been sold to Spillane &amp; Sons as of October 14th. They intend to erect a single-family home on that property in spring. Next, we will be having a pre-construction meeting for the theater on Phase 2 of their construction. We anticipate the permit for that work to be issued sometime later this week. From our Public Works Department, environmental abatement activities within City Hall, the lead paint and asbestos have concluded. Construction of new partition walls and other demolition activities have begun. Water crews have completed replacement of lead water services along Spring Street. This work will be enabled, will enable us to resurface the roadway prior to the onset of winter and retain the CDBG grant funds that were awarded to us for work in 2022, which is this year. Windmill Cove Underground Electric Replacement Project is substantially complete. Punchless items remain. And that is my Administrator's Report for today.
Any questions of Anthony? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. We have other business from the council? I just...
Your Honor, just one real quick. Just a reminder that this will be the last home football game Friday night for share of the conference title. They'll be playing St. Charles North, so 7 o'clock Friday, let's fill the stands up again.
It will be on TV?
Yes, it'll be on TV. We need everybody we can get out there.
All right. Let the word go forth. Under the mayor's report, I'm very quick tonight, I just want to make the comment that I have been kind of expressing to the staff, my concerns that we really need to do a little cleanup work along the banks of the Fox River as it goes through downtown. One case in point is our bridge out here, that's the bike bridge. There's an island out in the middle of the river that connects the two pieces of the bridge. And for some reason, we let all kinds of weeds grow up on that sucker this summer. And it looks like something you'd see in, I don't know, Civil War someplace. So I have asked, and I'm told that that's the responsibility that the Batavia Park District needs to go out there and cut that. And they've been a little bit reluctant to go out there because of the height of the river. My concern is, and I'll share this with all of you, for whatever reason, the Fox River in Batavia has become one of the most photographic spectacles in the area. And if you go over on Wilson Street and look at all the people that show up there now, between now and, say, Christmas, and want to have their picture taken with holding up some Christmas object with that bridge in the background, I'd rather have that bridge looking halfway decent than looking like something that nobody ever bothered to pay any attention to. And the, kind of the same is true with, you know, some of the areas south of the Wilson Street Bridge. We've got some parts of the bank that have fallen. I've asked Laura to ask the staff to get in there and get that cleaned up so it looks halfway decent. Because again, and then if you look at the Depot Pond here, again, this is a picture place. And come down here on the night of the homecoming or the night of the prom party, and this place is jam-packed with everybody having their picture taken, standing in front of the water. So we've got some things that people are very proud of, and I think we need to do what we need to do to get that way. So one of the things I'm going to be proposing next year, as we start the next season, I'm going to ask that we have a general committee meeting some night and invite the Batavia Park District and the Kane County Forest Preserve District to come in and meet with the council and just discuss what we're doing with the parks around here and specifically the riverfrontages, because the Forest Preserve District has a big swath of it just north of our city limits on both sides of the river with the Fabian program. And then when you get south of us here, they're right there, down there about Banbury Road and going down by Mooseheart and whatever. So I think it would be very enlightening to have a conversation with them and everybody understand what the positions of both of us is as far as that goes. And the Forest Reserve's the one I really want to bring in here, but I think the park